Welcome, everybody. This is the January 27th, 2025. It's an open public meeting via Zoom. A special board meeting of the Fort Ransom School Board. I'll call the role of board members present. You can either raise your hand, stick up a thumb, or say aye. So I'll call those people out. Samantha.
Here.
Jonathan.
Here.
Lynn Thorferson.
Here.
Chelsea.
Here.
Okay, let the record show that we have four of the five board members here. Secondly, I want to make sure that everybody understands that tonight because it's a virtual meeting. I'm not trying to downplay anybody, but we're trying to make sure that the board. First of all, we had the planning committee that you approved in December. And that planning committee then called for a special meeting for tonight. And then with that special meeting, they want an open public meeting on March 10th, 2025. Proceed the, which would proceed the the regular board meeting that is scheduled already for that evening. And so tonight, what we're really going to do is, first of all, there's not a lot that the board is going to be asked to do other than to call for the public hearing on, on March 10th, along with establish some rules that would go along with that. That public hearing. And then we have to get the notifications out and all those other things according to law. And then the second thing that we'd need to do is just the reporting that we put together as a committee on what we found out. And I'll have those in written communications. They're in draft form now. I sent them out a week ago. So everybody should have them. They have not changed since that time. So we'll discuss that this evening. So with that, if I could ask for a motion and a second to call for an open public hearing on Monday, March 10th, 2025, starting at seven o'clock with the regular board meeting to follow.
Yeah, Steve, I'll make the motion for the public hearing on March 10th with the meeting to follow.
This is Lynn. Jonathan, second?
This is Lynn. I'll second that.
Okay, thank you, Lynn. So it's been moved and seconded. Do we need any discussion?
Good on my end.
Hearing no discussion, let's call for the question. Board members in favor, either raise your hand or say aye.
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 Okay, unanimous. I thought maybe what the next thing we could do is just discuss a little bit about the rules that we took place. I put some of those together and I will share that document with you. I think I have it over here. Screen one. Anybody see what we have here?
I see the three possible pathways.
Okay, and that's what it should be. And then if you go down here where I'm highlighting it, you will see the open public hearing. And I just took this out from what normally is done at school board hearings, public hearings. Usually what they like to have is they like to have, they like to have oral presentations, but we limit people to five minutes. And so in other words, they would come in, sign in, because it has to be in the public record. They would sign their name, their address, and then they would then state their position and they have five minutes to do that. The second thing then we'd have, the presenters must be recognized by the board and should stand while speaking. You know, if they've signed in or talked to before and got on the list, that's part of it. It is sometimes you might have the same thing over and over and over again as board members. It's recommended in most of that, that groups that have it, we encourage them to, and we can post these rules on our website, but to designate a spokesperson so we don't have somebody going up and repeating everything that the last one said, and we hear it five times. Another one, and this has happened in my experiences, and I don't think it's going to happen with this, is that sometimes people in an open public meeting come there to complain about something, and they might come to complain about a person or somebody that's employed by the district. So John, those kinds of complaints would be out of order.
Yep, yep.
Any undue order business, I don't think we're going to see anything. Abuse of remarks, not, and here's one also is just because we're having an open public meeting doesn't mean that the person cannot submit. Let's say they're someplace else, they're not there. They can submit written testimony or what they would like to say or comments and submit that to the board for the public hearing, and they should be submitted before the end of the hearing. And then we can gather that information and use it. Is there anybody that sees anything else that should be used as rules?
Well, it seems pretty, pretty comprehensive list, Steve. It looks good.
My question is, um, and maybe you guys have already talked about this, but what's the plan for getting this information out to people prior to this meeting? Is there a plan to pop it on the app or?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll send it out. We currently have the editor from the Ransom County Gazette that is also on. So it'll be advertised and out there. I don't think we have to have the rules, but we do have to have the posted public hearing out there. And we have, I think Lynn is all ready for that. Biggest concern that I had is space. If we got a lot of people show up.
I think it might not be a terrible idea, just my thoughts about just letting people know that if they want to submit something written instead that they could, just because I want to make sure that everyone, you know, has the opportunity to say, but maybe A either aren't comfortable speaking at, you know, in public or just can't be there.
Any others? Comments? Because we can get those out, because what I'm going to do is I'm expecting to hear from you all and we'll get those out in the draft and we'll get them out right away. Lynn will get ready to, to put it and post it so it's got the public, it meets the public hearing requirements. And we can put it on our website.
So if we don't fit upstairs in the office, will we move it down to the lunchroom?
It could go to the lunchroom or we could go over to what we used to use for the kindergarten first grade room. There's quite a bit of room in there.
Okay.
That was a consideration that Lynn, Lynell gave us here earlier, so. All right. I'm going to shoot this.
One more question, Steve. If, so we're going to have this public hearing and discuss these options, is my understanding right? With the public and have them say anything they need to say? And then are we planning on making a vote at that meeting right after or what's?
No.
Okay. I'm just thinking about needing time to digest and hear more comments and all that, so.
As you seen in my pathway, I could tell you right now, things procedurally move very slowly. So if you heard what I had in that top one, and I'll go back to that in a second, or maybe I can go back to it right now. If you go up here to the top, I say, "The purpose of the meeting is to evaluate three possible pathways forward for the Fort Ransom School." Key considerations, the district will likely operate through 25, 26. And as I go through these requirements that we have as far as the pathway options, you can find out that there really, there is no way basically that Fort Ransom could say it's not operating next year. Because all of the deadlines that are put on by the state. So if somebody says we're closing the school, it's, that's not necessarily true. That, that's, that's taking an opinion that I don't think has much value. But then at the same time, we've got to make some provisions of what happens if we have not enough staffing? What happens if instead of eight kids, we have six kids? There's a lot of scenarios and, and I'll talk about that when I go back, but I call them triggers that I think that the board is, and, and the patrons of the district have better realize. One of the things that we did as a committee is we surveyed the staff responses and summary of that. And I put that summary in there. You should have it in front of you now. I hope you can see it. Key themes that we came across were enrollment challenges, sustaining the district with declining enrollment is a shared concern. Small class sizes raise questions about cost efficiency and resource allocations. K-4 model feasibility. You know, we have some licensure issues, so this year we don't have any kindergarten kids, nor do we have a staff member that is licensed to teach kindergarten. And so that was something that got thrown out there because as we look at cooperative agreements with Lisbon, the transition that they have is not seventh grade. Their transition is fifth grade from elementary to fifth grade to a middle school setting. So that was something that we were talking about. Additional support may be needed if kindergarten is added. Sustainability factors, challenge, challenges include aging infrastructure, limited staff and declining local population. And I should say local population, that's local enrollment. Creative solutions or external supports are necessary to address these barriers. Staff dedication, the staff is committed to the school's mission, willingness to adapt to changes. Ready to support sustainable efforts despite challenges. And then there was quite a bit on family and community engagement. Potential for attracting families along with the importance of promoting benefits. Second one that I want to go through is some real quick financial considerations. I'm going to change the view on this one. And we are going to go 200%, okay. There we go. There was quite a bit of, of consideration that I want you to look at with the financial insights. Our current financial system right now, we're projecting revenues of 486, expenses at 613, a deficit spending of 127, 154. So we're looking at the possibility of starting the year with four, the, and that should read 412, 39, that should be 25. Special reserve funds were not detailed separately in this budget provided. And so quickly, I can tell you that our special reserves are at the max. They're at 15 mils of our taxable value. So if our taxable value is $4,300 or 4,304 million point three, that means that we have 4,300 per mil, so we have about $65,000 in special reserve. Sustainable analysis is there. I looked at 3.2 years tax value considerations, and that was under a 12 mil increase. Some key challenges that we looked at is declining enrollment. We're projected to go from 11 kids to eight kids next year. Limited tax revenue growth, local property taxes restrict revenue flexibility and operating costs. We have a lot of it is fixed costs. And you people that were all with us last year know how many serious cuts we made. We cut about $100,000 out of that budget from last year to this year. The next one, we looked at the governor's proposal. A foundation per pupil increased 2% and 2%. And he also had in that governmental proposal, instead of a 12% cap is a 3% cap. And so then we'd get into those issues. And then we have proposed salary increases of 3.5 for our salaries. And so we had to throw those on. Revenues from the state and local properties would remain constrained. Salaries would rise with 3.5. And I honestly don't know where else we can cut. There's not much more. Most of it is fixed costs right now. There's not much more we can cut. We're down to one bus driver. We're down to two teachers, you know? So those, those areas get pretty, pretty tough. So running that scenario with all of those assumptions, our projections then are with the calculation of pretty much remain sustainable for 2.2 years. Now, I had to then run another one. So if we started looking at a kindergarten classroom, now you increase the cost because you're going to have to have it in. So that's not tough for us because we've budgeted separately for a kindergarten forever. So I took some of those and added a 2%, excuse me, a three and a half percent increase in the cost of running that kindergarten. And then the other one that I put in there is we currently don't have any special education students. If we had an enrollment of a special, I shouldn't say that. We do have students under an IEP, but we don't have any intense IEP time that could cost us in the, anywhere from 20 to $35,000. That's a round ball figure. And so we had to start looking at that possibility that if we had one kid, we could be just increasing, we're looking at about 33,000 for kindergarten. The addition to 20 to 35 for one additional student that may be in special education. So we had to run those scenarios along with the others. And then, of course, it starts looking at our huge years of sustainability. So then it starts to decrease with down to 1.7 in the first scenario that I have, and in the second scenario, 1.6. Revenue adjustments, additional revenue sources such as grants or partnerships offset new expenses. I'll talk about those when I talk about our, what I consider to be our three pathways as we move forward. The cost of the management, operating costs, consider it shared services for special education to reduce financial strain. But there in those particular cases, if there's a special ed student that has, if there's a staff member that has to come to Fort Ransom and provide those services input in Fort Ransom, you're pretty much going to look at that old scenario that we've operated on years of anywhere from 20 to $35,000 that we are going to have to pay for those services. And then, of course, the governor's proposal of capping taxable value growth at 3%. So things just keep moving down for us. So once again, recommendations is utilize the general mills to its fullest. We can start using some more of our special reserve. Strategic staffing solutions, consider shared positions. But long-term valid planning with districts with Lisbon or others to explore that and advocacy for more funding. State of Wyoming just initiated some piece of legislation where they give, they give, they give incentive grants to one-room schoolhouses again. So if I may, I'll go back to the pathways. Right now, I see that Fort Ransom Public School has basically three pathways. The first option, cooperative agreement with Lisbon Public Schools, which we have had for since 1967. We've had a cooperative agreement with Fort Ransom Public Schools since 1960, 67. Our agreement for this particular year was for 7 through 12. Lisbon K-6 remains a local. Lisbon oversees administration, co-curriculars and curriculum for grades 7 through 12. Lisbon benefits from receiving administrative funds while Fort Ransom receives a 30% discount on our tuition for its resident students K through 12. We maintain our local control K through 12, and we have shared resources. Limitations, configuration challenges. What happens if no licensed kindergarten teachers available or no current teachers willing to take on that role? Potential, sending kindergarten students to Lisbon. Or we looked at the other scenario where we would send the top grade to, but you know, as a board looked at that, it really didn't make any sense because the top grades are where our biggest enrollments are at. Once teachers are contracted for 25, 26, salaries will be paid regardless of how many students are attending to Fort Ransom School. So that's the first option is to go for 2025, 2026 is to work on a cooperative agreement. I've already talked with the superintendent at Lisbon, and they are willing to do it again. So.
Are you saying willing to do it again with the current configuration or to discuss a newer option?
Well, I think if they looked at, they, they might consider it with newer options. But they're kind of waiting to see what we all do here. But the door is not slammed that we don't want to work with you anymore. That's not it. So. I mean, when I started looking at enrollment, and I'm fighting that on a statewide because they've got the parental choice right now. If, if residents of the Fort Ransom District didn't exercise their current parental choice, we'd have 26 students at the Fort Ransom School instead of 11. The second option that I have here is reorganization with the, with the Lisbon Public Schools. To me, that requires a petition initiated by either district, a public hearing, a community vote, new boundaries, administration, financial, it takes a big plan. Benefit is you'd have a unified administration, resources for efficiency, continuity for students in the single district, preserve historical partnership, and opportunities to rev Fort Ransom's identity. Such as a reorganization plan could have Fort Ransom gets a board member on the Lisbon Board. Lisbon only has a five-member board now, maybe willingness to expand it to a seven-member board with a guarantee that people from the existing board, from the existing Fort Ransom Board would be represented. I don't know how that would fly. My research that I did for my doctoral work, my dissertation, that was a big issue for successful reorganization plans was the makeup of the school board. It was probably number one. Guaranteed jobs for current staff members, including teachers and bus drivers. You know, that used to be a day before COVID when we had the opposite happen in Fort Ransom. Where we had more kids opening and rolling to go to Fort Ransom for the small, more refined, more one-on-one attention in a multi-grade system than we do today. So that's something, including teachers and bus drivers and any other staff. One of our other benefits is Fort Ransom has, you know, if, I, I'm not going to brag up the school because the school building is not in really good shape. It doesn't meet ADA and all those other kind of stuff. But our bus garage could be a pretty good satellite area for transportation. Because it's in pretty good shape. Minimizing transportation concerns. Limitations, loss of independence and district identity, transition, staffing and policies, building constraints, current facility does not meet ADA or other codes, any remodeling would be real costly. A timeline, develop a five-year reorganization plan to ease the transition, allow Fort Ransom more control over assets and liability, address questions about how we're going to distribute our financial assets and all of those kinds of things. The last one that is the option under law is disillusionment. That one is probably the one that is used most by small decline enrollment school districts. It simply takes a petition and approval by the county committee. A community vote required redistribution of students' assets and liability to neighboring districts. In other words, students go to school where they want to. And then their land follows. Students reassigned to Lisbon or other districts, loss of local school identity and governance, there would be no. Because after the first year under disillusionment, they become a non-operating district, and they stay at an operating district until they disperse all their liabilities and assets and sell everything off. The benefit of it, it simplifies the administrative challenges to a reorganization as required by law. And it reduces the financial strain on the community. You guys don't have to worry about it because if Johnny wants to send all their kids to Enderland, then the land will follow them at a proportional rate, and they'll be paying taxes to the Enderland School District. Limitations, emotional and cultural impact on the community and loss of local influence on education. Timeline for this one is one to two years for completion. Immediate and long-term concerns. And these are some things that I brought up that we talked about in the committee is that we have a big commitment here for our staff, and that's the first one that I have here. Immediate, long-term concerns. 2025, 2026 contracts can be offered starting March 1st. Two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six contracts can be offered starting March first, two thousand twenty-five. So if we were going to move forward with the staff, we can't like last year, let them hang in forever. We have to get some decisions on which way we're going to go here. And so we'd have to make a decision there. Decisions required on whether to proceed with hiring for a K six or rely on a cooperative reorganization plan. And I don't know if I should have put reorganization. I should have said cooperative plan. So whoever's taking notes, please take that out of there. Triggers for closure, that's another thing that I think the board has to look at for strategic planning. Establish criteria for when disillusionment may be necessary, or any of these others. Enrollment thresholds, financial viability, staffing. You know? I, I, I have a tendency to be pretty blunt in my old age, and I will tell you that if Elizabeth Krueger decides that she's not coming back for twenty-five, twenty-six, the possibility of us finding a new staff member for next year is extremely low. Not saying it can't happen. And I don't want to threaten anybody to make it feel like it's a threat. But those are something that, you know, we have to think about and how we would do it. And then we have to start determining roles and responsibilities if there was going to be a closure once a trigger hit. So. What I'm thinking in the next few months, at least the next three months, is secure staff for twenty-five, twenty-six, determine roles and responsibility for decision-making and implementation. Collaborate with Lisbon to refine the cooperative agreement for twenty-five, twenty-six. Identify individuals to lead that discussion with Lisbon and determine main points to refine, ensure alignment with both districts' vision. And then depending on all of that, of course, is going to conclude from what we, as a, what you as a board hear and feel from your gut from the public hearing on March tenth. Questions on any of that? That's a lot of information.
I think all the information is great, Steve. You know, I think it's a a lot for us to chew on here in, you know, the next couple of months. So, I don't guess I don't have any, many questions as to, you know, what the next steps are, no matter which option we choose, but, you know. There's a lot of thought to put into this, I guess, you know.
Well, I think the immediate, I think the end of that, I pretty much hit the nail on the head here is that we need to get our staff hired and in place and work out, work out the bugs on the cooperative agreement with Lisbon for twenty-five, twenty-six.
Yep, I think that's, those are the looming questions, obviously. I mean, not questions, but the looming responsibilities we have here. So I think that's obviously what we have to do here, and we'll see what comes out of the public meeting and go from there.
And then the understanding as board members that as administration, and I've heard that from myself, and I've heard it from Lanell, is that most people want to know, they want to, they don't want to be just kind of hanging there. So what direction is everything going? Because I've got people that, you know, I can tell you, I don't want to get into each, each member, whether it was a board member, a staff member, what it is, but they also have personal lives. And so personal lives may include something that they're not intending to be around for two years or three years or a long-term commitment. And I think as a board, we need to have a plan together so that if somebody leaves, we got some session here and ready to go.
Kind of sounds like, I mean, there's a lot of what-ifs and there's a lot of potential. If this happens, then we're going to have to do this. And I think we need to try to work that out as much as humanly possible. You know, so that we have some sort of plan. If we chose an option that, you know, we go through this next school year, and then we decide that there's no other option, we need to dissolve, would that have to be on the vote coming up this November? I'm guessing, or is it like a special election or it would have to be?
Yeah, we would, we would have to set it. The board would have to set it.
So regardless.
I got, I got a good, close friend that just went through it here two years ago. They're non-operating. What he's doing right now is selling off their liabilities. So he's selling everything from their shop tools to their cafeteria stuff.
What does that look like? Where does that money go?
Well, it goes in there and then it gets, because you still have, you still have liabilities that could, you know, for example, when they hauled out all that asbestos out of the Fort Ransom School many years ago, that all got put in a bag, and that all got put with Fort Ransom Public Schools name on it. And it's at a landfill south of, south of Lisbon, north of Gwinnett. That's why we all pay insurance. But that's why I'd say, you know, you'd want to make sure that I got these financials, I had those financial scenarios. We, hopefully what you do is you put yourself in a position to, if that's something that you choose to do is to dissolve, that you don't have any money left when you're all done. Does that make sense?
But you still have assets, right, that you need to sell, or is that just public property or I?
Yeah, you still have assets, you still got a building, you still got, you know, you still got buses, you still got stuff. Yep.
So what I'm hearing you say is if we can start issuing contracts or talking about them prior to March first, we need to make a decision on some of those things prior to that point. And then to me, that's really our next step is depending on what the, how those contract offers go, that will decide our next steps.
Yep.
Because we can't go forward without a staff, so.
Yep, correct. That's one of the triggers. Yep.
Okay, so is, what is our plan? Are we going to have another meeting to discuss those contracts? Or are you guys able to do that on the back end?
Well, what we thought we would do when we talked about it is we'd start talking to staff more one-on-one. Because we don't want to go on rumor and hearsay, you know? Which we sometimes have.
Do you, do you mind, Dr. Johnson, if I make a comment?
Yes.
Okay, you know, as I've always professed, I love Fort Ransom and would have stayed here until I retired if possible. My husband is close to retirement, which puts us without health insurance. So to be honest, I have started looking, there are very few schools that I would leave Fort Ransom for. And, and I have not yet applied, but there is a position open that I am looking at. I hate to do it. I, I would love to stay here. I just don't know that it's possible for my family and my situation. I just, I, I want to make that perfectly clear and be transparent as possible because I don't want to leave the school in a lurch. The position, like I said, I, I've known about it since before Christmas, and I'm dragging my feet so much, I haven't even applied yet. That position, the posting closes in March, so I'll know after that. And like I said, I'm absolutely dragging my feet on doing it and, and, you know. But as of now, I do plan on applying for that position. And I feel terrible that I might be putting the school in a position like this, but I do want to be transparent so that nobody's wondering. And I don't know that it's something that I would want to say at a public hearing meeting in March, so I wanted to make sure to let you know here that that is, and I'll keep you informed and updated as much as possible.
So, and some of those are like Elizabeth was, was willing to share, but some of those, there's a lot of people that don't share that. And so, you know, we even have, you know, I know we have two board members that are up for reelection. Are they going to choose to run for reelection, or are we going to have to look for two new board members? Because there's no plan and pace and they don't see any future. I don't know. I can't predict that. Or I can't predict if somebody all of a sudden decides they're going to homeschool their three kids, or if they decide that they're going to take their kids to another school district. I, I told John this. I, I can tell you right now that that whole parental choice under the new legislative right now is not going to get any better. We had educational savings accounts, the homeschoolers that passed yesterday. I am more than certain it passed out of the house. I'm more uncertain than out of the house tomorrow, there'll be a charter school opportunity to establish twelve charter schools, and I suspect that soon we'll be looking at a voucher bill. So the governor already put forty-four point three million dollars into educational savings accounts. For parents, money, if they choose to send their kids to someplace other than their local public school. So I've told John Nest this, but I'm not real optimistic right now about that. And I, I, I mean, I wrote testimony today in opposition of charter. To me, it just taken money away from those schools, basically that are like Fort Ransom, that are seventy-five miles from the nearest Walmart. And we don't have a lot of choice. And now we're going to give money too. So we get capped at two percent, and then our property taxes get capped at three percent, our values. It's not going to work very well.
I think there's so many things to consider, but when I think financially, you know, looking at your projections and all of that, I mean, there's only so much we can do about that, right? And so I think that is one of our main pillars of concern that we need to consider. We can only do what we can do financially. You know, we, like you said, there isn't much more to cut. We've already kind of looked at all of that, and so if we can't operate for two years, I think it's secure staffing for this year, for this upcoming year, and then plan, I don't know, that's just my thought.
Yeah, it's, it's, I, I'd like to be more positive right now, but we also have to look at this very objectively. And that's why I say we, we really need to look at as a, I'd like you as a board to say, first of all, determine people's roles and responsibilities. And then what are the triggers that would move that needle one way or the other? You know? What's the trigger?
Do you want to go through those tonight, like one by one?
Well.
I mean, do we, I mean, is that the point of this meeting so that we can kind of move forward with that, or are we going to?
No, I think, no, that's, this meeting was more to be informative and set the public hearing.
Okay.
Because too many times we put the cart before the horse. Now, if I would have known last year in March that I was going to have two staff members or three staff members not come back and take four kids with them, we'd have probably had a little different discussion then. But we didn't know it at the board meeting. We'd heard rumors, but we didn't know it. So, anyway. Anything else, John?
Well, yeah, Steve, I think is us as board members, we should definitely be thinking here before our next meeting what we think those triggers are that will create, you know, insolvency in the, in the school district. So I would ask that, you know, all the, all the board members talk to people, start writing a list down of what is going to prevent us from operating next year? What is going to prevent us from operating the next year? I mean, we've seen the financial analysis, but, you know, what is the threshold that makes it, like I said, not feasible to operate? And I think, you know, we have a little bit of time here, not, not too much, obviously, to mull that over and to speak with amongst ourselves and with the community members to see, what is the appetite for the school to continue to exist? And what, like I said, are those bellwether moments that will prevent the school district from operating? So I think the information was great tonight, and I think there's a lot to chew on. And I would ask that everybody that participated in the meeting tonight and those that didn't participate in the, in the meeting tonight start really, really thinking about that, you know, it's a very difficult, difficult situation.
And, and John, it's also very, very difficult because the first thing that we always should focus on is the students.
Exactly, and the staff.
And the staff. And, but we still, at the same time, have to be realistic is, you know, how many, how many kids do we have? I can give you an example in western North Dakota of a community that they were hanging in there with seven kids, and they had a one-room schoolhouse. And the board hired a new teacher, and the parents didn't like the new teacher, and they homeschooled their kids. And so they went a year with paying a teacher that didn't have any students. And so now you got a combination of an issue.
That's, yeah, it's a situation I don't think we want to see ourselves in. I think, I don't, I can't speak for everybody, but I would rather see at that point that, you know, the funds that we have go to the place where our students are going to be educated.
Yeah. So anyway, we can't, we'll, we can't solve it all tonight, but at least we can be prepared. And I would encourage every board member and whoever is in here whoever is here to get people to show up for the public meeting, the hearing on March tenth, and if they can't make it, if they've got some reason for whatever, write comments they would, they would like to make so that the board has a lot to chew on and look at.
Yep, agreed.
Dr. Jay, while I still have you on here, can I just ask a quick question? You're so good at keeping us up to date with the legislation, and I'll admit I skim most of it, but I'm wondering if there's anything in your binoculars that you're really looking at that would significantly change our funding even more depending on our enrollment? I know there's been discussion on, you know, those amounts. Is there anything that you're like, if this happens, we're, we're going to have a decrease in funding? Is there anything like that that you can think of?
Well, what you all could help me out with on that one is that the state of North Dakota is basically saying we pay eighty percent or seventy percent of the cost of educating a child. That's an average. And when you look at averages for Fort Ransom, our state funding is only about forty-three. our state funding is only about forty-three percent of our total revenue. Not seventy-five percent or whatever the number they come up with. The second thing that I always try to promote and push out is that I don't know who has sold America on percentiles as a measurement. But percentiles on a measurement for small is not a good, so you're going to treat everybody the same. So Fort Ransom has a taxable value of four point three million. Okay? Cap them at three percent. And then you've got Fargo that's got over two hundred and twenty-five million dollars and cap them at three percent. Okay? The system that they have now only works for the middle size, I would say, the school districts of two hundred and fifty or larger that are growing in population and then growing in value. So I could go back to Lisbon. We might build two houses in Lisbon, North Dakota a year. West Fargo might build a hundred and fifty houses in a year and they might get four hundred and fifty new students. That's all growth. So that's just my thinking is that if I have a hundred thousand dollar salary and you give me three percent raise and then you got a teacher with a thirty thousand dollar salary and you give her a three percent raise, who's going to come out better at the end of the day? I'm going to continue to create a bigger, bigger in gap between the, the large and the small. So I just read some legislation that's going in Wyoming right now. They're allowing innovative grants for one-room schoolhouses in Wyoming. Going back to frontier days, they say, which I thought was kind of neat. And instead of ours, they want to see how many districts they can lose every year. Because we got too many. All right, with that being done, what I will do now is I'll get that posted, I'll stop the recording. And I'll get that posted out there and then we'll prepare to get the hearing notice out. Any last comments?
Just a thanks to everybody that attended, Steve, appreciate the dedication and appreciate the paying attention to what's going on here. I, like I said, the school's been going for a long time and it's a very difficult situation. So I appreciate everybody's attendance and Elizabeth, I appreciate the transparency very much, so thank you.
I move to adjourn whenever you're ready.
We have a motion by Chelsea, do I have a second?
I second.
Second by John. Declare the, the meeting adjourned.
Thanks, everybody.